I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get started, let me read the emergency evacuation procedures. In the event of an emergency evacuation, an alarm will sound. Everyone should exit the building by way of the nearest stairwell in a safe and effective manner. If the nearest stairwell is blocked by smoke, use the other stairwell. Do not use the elevator. Once you have reached the main floor, follow the exit signs to exit the building and quickly proceed away from the building. Please be mindful of others evacuating and of emergency vehicles. Members of the commission, you have received the minutes of the January 24th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Not to have a motion to approve? And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Meeting minutes of January 24th are approved. Public hearings. Roger, rezoning request from suburbanizing to commercial at 228 Keith Road. This is a public hearing. Roger, if you'll brief us, then we'll open the mic.
This rezoning request is for property at 228 Keith Road to be zoned, rezoned from suburbanizing to commercial. The property is identified on tax map 56, parcel 171. This property is approximately one acre in size. The property is located in an area of other commercially zoned properties along William Blunt Drive. This rezoning would be contiguous with the commercial zone in that immediate area and would be consistent with our zoning map. Two of the five properties located on Keith Road are already zoned commercial, and this property has the closest access to William Blunt Drive. Directly across the street from this property is a commercially zoned property that currently houses a self-storage business. Keith Road is a short dead-end road that ranges from 30 feet in width to 17 feet in width at the entrance of the self-storage business. The driveway, which is approximately 200 feet from the intersection with William Blunt Drive. The driveway to this property is approximately, well, the driveway to this property is approximately 200 feet from William Blunt Drive, which is prior to the entrance to the self-storage. But the property corner is approximately 70 feet from William Blunt Drive. This property is currently taxed as residential and has a vacant home on it. The property owner has stored several cars on this property while construction is being done at the site of his used car lot. He has assured me, and I talked with him today, to be reassured that this is not, he is not conducting business there, but only using it for temporary storage, and will be removing them once the construction is done. The property in question has shown hats on the following map.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this rezoning request? Okay, I've got two. You're first. If you would, step to the mic, state your name.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stuckey. Thank you. Holden Lael. I come here wearing two hats, basically. I'm a member of the commission and also resident community and also have interest in the family farm that surrounds this particular property. First of all, I've spoken to a couple of constituents. I report from the commission's standpoint that I have one, Mr. Hodge, who obviously is in favor of this because it's his property that he's working with, and then another gentleman, I think, is here tonight who opposes this commercialization because he lives on that road and has a problem with the potential traffic issues there. As for me, I understand his position on the potential traffic, also the fact that it is a commercialization on a secondary road in that community there. There is a business that exists there. However, that business that's been referred to does back up in a butt William Blunt Drive, which is considered a commercial artery. I would like for this group to consider those aspects as you go through it. The property itself is a lot sized approximately an acre. It is encapsulated by our family farm that has been there in existence since 1947, and this was formerly a residential area that, you know, has been passed on through the thing. So I would ask this commission to look at that, those particular items, as you consider this change from suburbanizing to commercial. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir. State your name.
Shannon Cheshard. I live at the end of Keith Road, next to the storage building warehouses. I have a problem with it for a couple of reasons. One is the traffic it brings. Since he's put cars there and stored cars there, you know, there are still some stickers on the car that says warranty stickers and stuff that there was. I know a couple of them still have that. You can tell it is cars that are for sale. There has been a couple people have stopped and looked at them, got out and looked at them. A couple of times when I was home, I have seen a few more cars that stop there, and then they come all the way to the end of the road and turn around because you can't tell, even though there is a sign there that says dead-end. People don't pay attention to it, but because of curved road codes, it turns, they don't see that the dead end is till they actually turn the curve. And so it brings more traffic. And once it is opened up, I believe that there will be even more traffic coming through their scene in it. The other problem I have with it is the crime that will bring to our area. I used to live behind Stop &amp; Go Motors, which is now Ideal Motors down on 411. I rented from Mr. Al Schreiber that owned Stop &amp; Go Motors, and there was constantly people going in and out the car lots. I one time witnessed somebody breaking into a car, reported it. But it does bring extra people to that area. I have a four-year-old and a 13-year-old, a 14-year-old, that I don't need that extra traffic coming down my street. I do know, well, on the crime issue, I know this is far away, but Chicago Tribune did an article one time that said, and the title of their article was "Crime Lots Draw, Car Lots Draw Crime Like Magnets." I have a friend that owns car lot. He has cars broken to, stole out there. I don't want to see that. It is a secondary road. It's not on the main road. Like Mr. Holden said, it is, you know, it's capsized around his farm, and I just, I really would like y'all to consider not making that and keeping it a residential area. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the request for rezoning of the property at 228 Keith Road?
My name's Alan Lael, and Holden's pretty much said everything I've got to say about the family farm and everything. I'm just here in support that Holden's statement on that.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Roland Zeehender, and when I bought property just directly west of where this is being proposed six years ago, I thought I was going to be nestled between two beautiful churches and the school across the street. And now that I'm hearing this is coming in, I'm wondering what could possibly be next? I don't believe we need a commercial property in that area. You've got homes there. They are homes being built, a new one under construction right now across William Blunt Drive. So there are going to be more built in there, and I would be very much opposed to you granting permission for this car lot to be taking place in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. My name is Brent Lael. My father Alan and Uncle Holden have spoken to you. My concerns about the issue of this car lot is two. One, the property that my family has owned has been there for quite a while. It was bought and has been passed on between the generations of our family. It is my hope that that area can continue to stay in the fashion that it is so I can pass it on to the next generation, my son, Holden's grandchildren, and so forth. The other concern I have is the safety of residents in that area. I know in the last year or two, we've had issues of theft, and I know that's been an issue broad throughout the area. My concern is that with a car lot, it will draw more people to the area to try to steal things in which our property being right there, surrounding the property of the car lot, it would then entice them to come onto our property and create issues of theft or damage. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue before us?
Betty Maynard, and I agree with Mr. Zeehender. I live in the subdivision across the street, and it would be nice not to have a lot more traffic there and the car lot right there in her face, you know?
Do I have anybody else? If not, public hearing on 228 Keith Road is closed. Roger, we want to go into discussion on it before we do the next one. Members of the commission, any comments or thoughts?
Roger, can you clarify? You listed the addresses, Keith Road. Does the property actually front William Blunt Drive as well?
It doesn't have direct frontage on William Blunt Drive.
Does not?
No. It directly abuts the commercial zone because the commercial zone goes down the opposite side of Keith Road, but it doesn't, it doesn't have frontage on direct access to William Blunt Drive.
I'm just trying to confirm the exact location. This is basically across the street and across the railroad tracks from Rubbermaid, correct? Or Newell, it's called?
It's on the other side of William Blunt Drive from Rubbermaid.
Correct.
But Rubbermaid is also on the other side of the railroad tracks too, so, yes.
I think is what it said. So my next comment, and I would like to make sure that we, is important that we are not making a decision based on a car lot being there. If we decide to zone this for commercial, it will be allowed to have any commercial use, correct?
That is correct.
And could you please remind me and everyone else of all of the commercial uses that would be allowed in that zone?
Well, there's a list of them, but it pretty much, I don't have that in memory. I don't have that list.
I think, personally, I think that's important by making this decision. We're not really deciding on a car lot. You're deciding on any commercial use, and I think it's important that we are reminded of those uses that are allowed before we make that vote.
Yeah, it'd be similar to the uses in any commercial zone.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Roger, by the lines that's drawn on the commercial, is that Keith Road, is it in the commercial or is it in the?
There's actually two properties on Keith Road that are commercial.
No, the road.
The line's right on the road. According to this map, it basically, the line is the road.
But the line is the road.
Correct.
So the road is commercial.
John, you might better answer that.
This is actually, I think, from the original zoning map.
It is.
Is that correct? That map was a very rough map. It used the old tax maps, and I drew it with a rather fat felt-tip pen. So it looks to me like the road, at least up towards William Blunt, is actually in the commercial zone. What it did, it took in the back portion of roads that front on William Blunt Drive. Actually, I think they're accessed off Keith, right?
Yes, they are accessed off Keith.
So you could interpret that to mean that that road is zoned commercial?
Why I said that, I went down there and looked at this piece of property. To get to these rental property, you come off Keith Road.
Yes.
So for that, for those buildings to be on a commercial piece of property, they would have had to either enter off of William Blunt or off Keith Road as a commercial road, and that's where they enter off of that road. So the next piece of property is a house, and is that zone, that's in a zoned, commercial zone?
It is.
So we've got a residential house and a suburbanizing that's in a commercial zone.
Yeah, it's residential use in the commercial zone.
Right, absolutely. So we've got a road that's commercial, and this lot is tied to that road.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Yes. Just thinking about this, I try to put myself, if I was in either one of y'all's positions, the Laels and the farm, or Mr. Hodge and his property that's been there and has paid taxes for years, and as well as y'all have paid taxes for years, and this unfortunately is a growing area on William Blunt. And, you know, there may be a day that you guys will want to rezone to, for a Walmart or what, I don't know. But that being said, we have to judge this in a fair manner and put this as if we was in the shoes of that property and take all the things into consideration, and this is a really tough, tough decision here.
Thank you, Mr.
Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Kirby may have touched on this, but Roger, I've got a couple, the two pieces of property that are zoned commercial now on Keith Road, are they being used as a piece of, is there any commercial use being used, are they being used as a commercial piece now?
Only one of them.
One is being used, and what is it?
Mini storage.
Okay. And I think the other piece, did Commissioner Kirby say had a residential house on it?
That's correct.
And they both are on Kirby Road. Neither one of them back up to William Blunt Road?
They back up to it, but their access, their driveways come off Keith Road.
So the two, so the two pieces of commercial property front on Kirby and also go back and have access to William Blunt also, is that what you're saying?
They, they abut William Blunt Drive and Keith Road. Their driveways come off Keith Road.
I understand that. But they are, they abut both roads, is what you're telling?
Yes.
And the one that's being requested just abuts Keith Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Roger, if I could ask a question, I'm having trouble on this map that you've given us. We're talking about parcel 171, which is on the south side or southeast side. Where is Keith Road? Is that the black line that actually goes?
Yes, you can't actually see the right of way for Keith Road because of the actual zoning boundary.
So is there an intersection with Keith Road right there at William Blunt?
Yeah, there's an intersection that's improved several feet back where Keith Road comes into, into William Blunt Drive, and that's, you know, it starts off as a 30-foot wide paved section, and it tapers, continually tapers down to 17 feet. And I just measured back to where the driveway for the mini storage business was. I didn't go beyond that.
But the existing, the properties that are zoned commercial are, would be on the southwest side of Keith Road?
Yes.
So this would be the first piece of commercial property on the northeast?
Correct.
Okay. And does Keith Road, oh, okay, I can see it. It does cross the railroad tracks.
It does not. Actually, it dead-ends at the railroad tracks.
Okay, yeah, I can see there now.
No, 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 it dead-ends right here.
Oh, the wonders of technology. Why didn't you give us a Google map? Okay. Any other questions or comments? We have a request before us. With the approval or recommendation against, needs to be included in the motion.
All roads that are in commercial property, the main road like 321 to Frenchville, the road is commercial, and that's how they build commercial on each side of it, by taking the road first. We got a road here that's commercial, got commercial on the left side of the road, and we wanted to put one lot of commercial on the right side of the road. I make a motion, we approve it, and send it on the full commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion to send on to the county commission for a public hearing and their action with sending them our recommendation for approval of the rezoning request. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
No.
Roll call.
David Caldwell.
No.
Mike Kaver. Ron French.
No.
Brad Harrison.
Yes.
Geneva Harrison. Tom Hodge.
No.
Gerald Kirby.
Yes.
Bruce McClellan.
No.
Jerry Roddy.
No.
Clifford Walker.
No.
Gordon Wright.
Yes.
Ed Steffens.
Yes. Motion carries by a slim majority, six to five. Roger, public hearing rezoning request on Cedar Creek Road.
Forgive me just a second. This request is to rezone property on Cedar Creek Road near the intersection of Wares Valley Road to commercial from R1. The property is identified on tax map 97, parcel 11. The property is currently located between a commercially zoned property and an existing grandfathered campground. The owner of this property also owns the property at 205 Wares Valley Road. That property is identified on tax map 97, parcel 12.02, which currently houses a tubing business. The property owner has a plat to combine the parcel in question with the lot at 205 Wares Valley Road in order for the lot in question to have access on to Wares Valley Road, which is an arterial road. I've included a copy of that plat, but it has not been approved at this time. That may have changed. I'm not sure if it has or not. The combination of these parcels would allow parcel 11 to have the frontage on arterial status road, which is better suited to handle commercial traffic than Cedar Creek Road. This request is consistent with the zoning and use of properties that are located in that immediate area. There's a small portion of this parcel that extends across Cedar Creek Road and lies on the bank of Little River. This portion of the lot, this portion of the lot has not been included in this report simply because it is not suitable for development. And of course, I have attached the maps for your review.
All right, we are open for a public hearing, public comment on the request for rezoning of property identified as tax map 097, parcel 11. Is there anyone that wishes to speak to the rezoning request of this parcel? If there is no request to speak, the public hearing of this only request is closed. Questions from the commissioners. Commissioner Kirby?
I'm sorry?
Oh, okay. Roger, I have a question, and Shannon, maybe you can answer this. The plat that grants access to Wares Valley Road, how does that get approved?
Well, would it have to be registered?
Okay.
I don't think it's, has it been registered yet, Shannon?
My understanding was that because it was over five acres, that it could be done in-house on the plat, and then we're waiting to see how it went with the commission before we recorded it.
Yeah, it's a real simple, greater than five acre combination, so I can just stamp it as exempt and it can get registered immediately.
Okay, so this, the plat will be actually joined with the existing lot that is already facing on Wares Valley Road. Okay, thanks. I just need a clarification on that. Is there any questions or comments? Do I have a motion? I have a motion to approve with a recommendation for the rezoning, is that correct, Commissioner? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Site plans. Revised Robert Heron property off of Murphy Road. Doug, you carry that?
Yes, sir. We have the revised Robert Heron property off of Murphy Road by Bob Heron. That's incorrect there, John just pointed out. That should see three lots, two with road frontage and one to be served exclusively by an easement. The plat you have for some reason in front of you is the wrong one. You're looking at the previous version, and I apologize for that. I do have the amended plat. One in front of you was the previous plat, and I can't remember if we intended to show you both, and that's how we eliminated this one, but I apologize. Yeah, they're eliminating one lot. The size of the parcel is the same, and it actually improves the situation for the environmental health department. It's a pretty, pretty minor change, but we have to go through the process. The outstanding items to be completed are on page three, and I'll just read those into the record while you continue to look. Number one is the copy of the modified maintenance agreement to be supplied to staff prior to releasing the final plat. Number two, signature plats with all certifications, including water and electric. And item number three, a $20 per lot plating fee.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I have a question, Doug.
Yes, sir.
The maintenance agreement, is there a copy of that? Do we have? Do we have a copy of that here?
No, we, staff reviews that and just reports to you if it's correct or, or not finished yet. If you'd like to see them in-
So it hasn't been modified yet, right?
It hadn't been at the time I wrote this.
Okay.
This is pretty much boilerplate, and all they do is put in the number of lots and what's actually on the easement. It's, it's pretty standard. We can get you a copy if you need one.
When we sign the plat too, we'll make sure the day they come in, that they actually have a notarized version of our final draft that we've approved, and then record them both at the same time.
Commissioner McCollum, motion to approve.
We have a staff recommendation.
With staff recommendation. We have a motion to approve and a second of the plat with incorporating staff recommendations. If I understand this correctly, basically, Doug, we've eliminated the lot line between three and four of the plat we're looking at, so it increased that plat.
Yes.
It increased the size of that lot.
And since there's only the one lot served by the easement, the requirement for him to build a common driveway goes away.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, subject to completion of outstanding items. Are there any further comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, John, for spotting it.
Amended road plat for Joe Pie Lane.
Item number two begins on page four. Amended road plat for Joe Pie Lane, it's a private road in the Singing Brook subdivision, which is owned by, I understand, the Singing Brook Conservancy. This, originally, I just do, give you a little bit of history and what you're looking at. Singing Brook subdivision was approved as a fifteen lot subdivision in two thousand and five as a gravel road. In two thousand and ten, an additional seven lots called the Singing Brook cottages were approved off this road. And it's, like I said, it's a gravel road, but it's also a one-way road, and it's a gated community. Between the time of two thousand and five and two thousand and ten, the road is paved. In order to add the seven lots, we did a, we had a study done that showed that that road met our paved private road standards. When they recorded the original plat for Singing Brook in two thousand and five, as you'll see, there's a little strip of property between the private road easement and the property next door that is labeled the David W. Long trustee property. That was allowed at the time because that was a private road on a private community, and it's a one-way road, and they didn't want necessarily any neighbors joining onto their easement. They have since acquired that property, and the intent is to divide, and you'll see that on the next plat, a couple lots off of that David Long trustee property onto Joe Pie Lane. In order to do that, they need to modify the easement, and since this is a road, it becomes a road plat change, so we bring it to the planning commission. It's actually fairly standard, it just changes the right-of-way on one side of that road. And this entire road and the right-of-way will be maintained by the conservancy.
Any questions or comments? Everybody understand what Doug just told us?
I'm a little bit confused about taking this and adding it to, it's already private and you're gonna, why do we need to approve it if it's already private?
Do you want to explain that, John?
It came in as a plat that you approved, and they're changing the plat and extending the right-of-way, so it needs to show an amended plat. In other words, they have to have the plat registered to extend that right-of-way. I see what you might be saying, they could just grant the easement, but they're actually, they're amending a plat to, to do that.
Any other, Commissioner French?
I guess I'm curious, how wide was the piece of property, the piece of land that was between the property and, and the easement? How wide was it?
That's not very wide, I, I can't really tell by the scale I'm here.
I couldn't, I couldn't either.
Maybe fifteen feet, maybe. To get a better understanding of what Bruce just said, there's probably another option, another way to do this, but it was originally platted, and they wanted, the, from what I understand, this is the way they wanted to do it.
Okay. All right.
And I will, for the record, the outstanding items to be completed, if I could just read that in, there is only one signature plats with all certifications.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to grant preliminary approval of the plat, subject to all the ownership and signing.
I have a motion to approve, subject to completion of the signatures, and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Deal property, track two and four by David Long trustee.
Yeah, if you'll look at the item D three, this is the continuation of the last item. There are two large tracks and a remainder greater than five acres off of Joe Pie Lane. This is a little bit different scale, but now that they've widened that right-of-way, these two tracks are intended to come off of Joe Pie. Track number two is going to have direct frontage on Joe Pie Lane, and track number four will be served by an easement. There's no requirements to do any work on that easement for one lot, just like the first item. Outstanding items to be completed, number one are the signature plats and a twenty dollar per lot plating fee.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations and a second.
Second.
I've got the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Walker property off of Rudd Hollow Road by Dan Walker, three lots with county road frontage.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you, you want to take a look at item D four, I'll just try to be brief in explaining this. It's not really that complicated, there's just a lot of lines here. If you'll notice, track two and track one on Rudd Hollow Road, both of those are under five acres. The sections directly behind both of those were both parts of those lots, and they're simply adding both of those sections to track number three. And the reason it has to come to the planning commission is because it's a three lot subdivision, but it's actually a fairly simple division. There's no real site distance issues, all of tracks can have good site distance, so there's not a lot of other things to evaluate it. The health department has looked at it. The only outstanding item to be completed is on page seven, number one, signature plats including water and electric and a twenty dollar per lot plating fee.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner McCollum?
Motion to approve with staff recommendation.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ray? There's no further comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Miscellaneous items. Charles Lunsford property by Charles Lunsford off of Calderwood Highway, two lots.
Yeah, if you'll look at miscellaneous, item number one, it looks like a pretty standard subdivision. However, there, these two lots both have road frontage on Calderwood Highway. The variance request is because the entire lot one and the entire lot two are completely within the floodplain. The subdivision regulations, I mean, you can build in a floodplain, we have regulations for that. We have a floodplain zoning ordinance that allows you to build, you have to elevate the structure and so forth and certify it. But the subdivision regulations are a little bit different, they basically state that every single lot that the planning commission creates has to have a buildable area outside of the floodplain. And we've stood by that for a long time, there's only been one other instance that I know of where you granted a variance for the exact same thing you're looking at. And the reason I bring this to you is, you know, both of the lots can meet sized requirements, the health department doesn't have an issue with it. Road frontage is good, site distance in this location is good, any additional driveways, they have to get a permit from T dot. I think the only exception here is that everything you see here is already here. Both the structures are there, and they're simply asking to put a line down the middle.
Okay.
And I, you know, I believe they understand, you know, that it requires the variance, and if they carry flood insurance or not, that, that's up to them, but it's clearly in the floodplain, so. Let's see if I have anything else. Let me just read you what I understand the variances.
Well, let him read. Commissioner Kirby?
Yes.
Let him finish first, and then we'll go to questions.
Yeah, I did, let's see. I actually did tell you something that was a little bit incorrect. There is a variance request to the subdivision regulations for minimum lot size for lot two, it will be smaller than our thirty thousand square feet, it'll be twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. They could technically make it a little bit bigger, but that'll be up to the planning commission. Variance request to the subdivision regulations that requires all lots to have buildable area outside of the floodplain, and variance to minimum frontage along a minor arterial from one hundred and fifty feet to one hundred and forty-two feet for lot one and ninety-nine feet for lot two. So essentially, the road front requirement for this road is supposed to be a hundred and fifty feet a lot, unless they have a shared driveway, which they do not. But like I said, taken in whole, everything you see here is already here.
Commissioner Kirby?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lot two and lot one was originally one lot.
Mm-hmm, they, they are now.
Okay, with two different structures.
Yes, sir.
So the structure on lot one is within how close to that line they're wanting to propose now?
Well, I think it meets the setback, this is really not the scale, it was, it's not even a current survey. This was done for the owner years ago, and they never asked for permission, they never brought to the planning commission, and they're doing so now, and they understand they'll have to get this updated, and it'll have a little more detail, like front setbacks, and it'll have a dimension for that building.
So thirty, twenty thousand on two and thirty-seven thousand square feet on one.
Is that what I wrote?
Is that correct?
I think it's one acre, one acre on lot one, one point zero one acres.
Okay, forty-four thousand feet, so they're good there. So really, what we're proving is the split of the one piece of property into two.
Mm-hmm.
And we don't have nothing to do with the floodplain or none of that stuff, it's already been proved in the original subdivision?
No, sir, no, this is a, doesn't go back to a platted situation that I can find, these are just, what you see now, lots one and two don't exist, it's one lot.
Right, correct.
This is the proposal, so this would be the platted situation. And so you would be acknowledging that they're in the floodplain, but granting a variance to the fact that they are because both structures are already there, if you vary your regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner McCollum?
If this gets approved, I recommend that be a flood statement put on the plat of record.
And there will be, we require, we require that, that the entire, the statement will say that the entire lot is located within the one hundred year floodplain.
Okay.
And it'll have the flat map number and everything, and that's part of what would be the updated plat. And I would like to continue before you make any motions to read the outstanding items to be completed.
Okay, go ahead.
Number one is the consideration of the variance requests. Number two is an updated plat showing the front setback and dedication of right-of-way off of Calderwood Highway. Number three is a signature plats and a twenty dollar per lot plating fee. And number four, the owner is responsible for contacting T dot for any additional driveway connections.
Commissioner Roddy, have a question?
Yes, the existing structures can stay, but no new structures can be built because it's in a floodplain?
No, that's not necessarily correct. Both structures can stay whether you divide it or not, they're in a grandfathered situation. If they want to build another structure, it, it could not be a residence, but if they built something, they would have to contact the building commissioner's office and get a permit, a building permit, and it would have to meet whatever flood requirements there are. Now, if it's a shed, I don't know what they are, I think if it's a living structure, if they took one of these off. And there, there can be another caveat or note on the plat that if these are removed, they need to be built to flood elevation, and they would have to, when they came to get a permit, they would, they would flag that to start with.
Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are both the structures that are present now, are that both of those residences?
They're both residences, I can't, I don't know if they're inhabited though, but they are residences.
Okay, and, and one other question is, have we done something like this before? I'm just curious, are we setting a precedent here, or, I mean, I-
You're not setting a precedent, this-
This has been done before.
It has, the variance for this exact same thing has been granted one time that I can find.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with our recommendation from staff.
Okay, and that would include the addition of a floodplain statement to the plat, because that means the plat has to be brought current, a current survey done with the setbacks, et cetera, put on it.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Could we also add a second one, that if these are torn down and a new structure is put on, that they have to meet all regulations of floodplains?
Yes, sir, that'd be great, that'd be a good-
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve the variances as stated, with the addition that the lots will be identified as sitting in the floodplain, and that if the structures are replaced or removed and rebuilt, they would have to meet floodplain regulations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Schultz property off of Bolt Gunner Road by Randy Schultz.
Staff write-up is on page eight, miscellaneous request number two, I'll let you look at it a second while I speak to it. There are three lots, two lots are served exclusively off of a twenty-five foot common driveway easement, and there's a variance request of minimum lot size. This proposal and, and the dashed line that you see is actually something that I drew after I had the owner kind of give me an idea what he wanted to do, and I spoke with Gary Ferguson. So we don't know the exact size of this lot, and it's, it's funny shaped. If you look at the flag coming off the road, you'll see, where it says lot one, you'll see a cabin labeled with, it looks like a porch around it, then the second cabin on the smaller lot that I drew on here for you. And then the lot two in the back has a cabin right there in the corner, that little thing you see is actually a cabin. That, that's what makes lot one look so funny, because there's a reserve area for the septic that's directly behind that cabin. I know the owner would like to eliminate that area from future reserve, but I've spent some time with Mr. Ferguson, and that cabin, which is right above lot one, is a four-bedroom cabin, and it's already a very small lot. He would like to see that lot be a minimum of the thirty thousand square feet to meet our requirement, even though the driveway's on that lot as well, and there's a lot of impervious surface. In front of that cabin is a huge roundabout, so there's not a lot of reserve area. The smaller cabin is a one-bedroom cabin on the, on the little dashed-in lot, and I believe the other cabin on the back lot is a one, is a one-bedroom as well. This is kind of the way the owner would like it, they simply want to divide for purposes of sale, they can't sell two cabins, it just, it's been on the market a long time. This, this creates a variance to the subdivision regulations for minimum lot size for that small lot, and I, I wrote on here that it would be approximately twenty thousand square feet, and that the larger lot would be about thirty thou, thirty-seven thousand square feet, however, that thirty-seven- However, that 37,000 is a lot of area that can't be used. And then the back lot would be what it is, 1.3 acres. If anybody has a suggestion about adding additional parts to the back of that property, I guess that's feasible, but maybe not practical because of where the cabin is on the rear property and, and access to it. The outstanding items to be completed are on page 9. Number 1 is the consideration of the variance request. And number 2, an updated plat showing the proposed division and signature plats and a $20 per lot plating fee.
So it'd be creating a Lot 3 where the dotted, the dashed line is?
Yeah, and I'm saying that'd be about 20,000 square feet. I don't know exactly what it would be. I know that when they go out there to do it, that Mr. Ferguson wants to be involved to make sure that he gets what he needs for both of those to work. He did state to me that the cabin and the way I drew the lot, that the system is within there, the existing system, and he believes for a one-bedroom, he has adequate room on a 20,000 square lot, square foot lot for duplicate. He's pretty confident that's fine. And as long as it's drawn this way, with the reserve area behind the cabin for Lot 1 that stretches up with that long shape, he, he's okay with that as well.
Do we have any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I move to accept pending the outstanding items to be completed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, subject to completion, of outstanding items. Do I have a second? Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. So an up-to-date survey would have to be completed to-
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Doug.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John, long-range planning.
I have, I have one item that's actually in two parts. If you will look at the map that was laid up on your desk, you'll look at that as we talk, you'll get some context. There's a proposed planned rural resort district. This has actually gone to the county commission. They have set public hearing for March 21st. Am I correct on that from the county commissioners? Okay. So that, so it's in process already in the county commission. Before the county commission can act on any proposed zoning change, change in zoning text, it has to come to the planning commission for your recommendation. So that's what it's here for tonight, for your consideration and recommendation. You'll see a resolution attached to the memo. That is the resolution that was considered by the county commission in setting a public hearing. So if any, if there's any changes to that, they would actually have to reboot the public hearing. I want you to understand that, but that is within your, your purview. I provided an analysis. Anytime a change in the zoning text comes through, particularly if you're creating a new zone, you need to look at the basic planning documents. I've looked at the Bunt County Policies Plan. I've also looked at the conceptual land use plan for Bunt County, and also the context of the zoning resolution itself, which is a zoning plan for the county, and the context of the 1101 growth plan. In all those plans, there is support for a planned rural resort district. There, it's, it's sometimes not very direct, but, and sometimes quite, quite direct. There is some leeway, even in our land use plan, for mixed-use development. That is a, an allowed type of development, and this is a mixed-use development in a planned context. There is some, there are provisions in our zoning regulations that allow for planned unit development. What this does is take it to a higher level and make it into a zone itself and require some, actually a large piece of land to, to accomplish this. So I find support for this type of development in our plans. One of the issues that I raise here is the level of the infrastructure. That is a local road. Most of the plans refer to a, a, the context of a collector status road, and that's what this map is about. If you would consider this resolution and your, your recommendation to the county commission separately and apart from any action you might need to take to declare West Millers Cove Road as collector status road. Declaring this as a collector status road would require an amendment of a major road plan. We've done that before for other roads in different situations. And what you would need to do was, would be to consider from Highway 321, that is, East Lamar Alexander Parkway, to Mountain Homes subdivision property line, basically the, what is shown there in a dark line to, to Mountain Homes property line, declare that and, and reclassify as, that as a collector status road. That would take 30 days' notice for public hearing in the newspaper. It could run in public hearing notice next Tuesday, March 5th. And you could hold a special call meeting if you felt the urgency to do so on April 4th, which would be a Thursday, or you could wait till the April 18th, Thursday regular meeting. So these are two things. First is the consideration of the resolution that is now before the county commission and a recommendation on that. The second is, I think, to make consistency with plans to reclassify East Millers Cove, West Millers Cove Road as a collector status road. And we can start both of those processes at the same time.
You take the road first?
You can take either one of them, or you can take them both together. I guess, you'd actually take separate. One's a recommendation to the county commission, the other one'd be set in public hearing.
The public, the public hearing, the public-
Hearing being the collector status on the road, correct?
Yes.
Is it appropriate to go ahead and-
Sure.
-make that recommendation, or is it a motion?
It would be a motion. You just got to set the date and the time. Given you two options, if you want to get a jumpstart on it, you can actually set it for April 4th, which is a Thursday, or you could wait till the regular meeting April 18th.
I would like to make the recommendation that we, for the collector status for West Millers Cove Road, be set for April the 4th, if that is not appropriate for the majority of the attendees, then April the 16th. John, I think you said was the normal date?
Actually, I, I, that was a mistake. That's the county commission meeting night. It would be April, April the 25th.
April the 25th?
Yes.
Did, have I stated that correctly?
Uh, just need to pick a date, pick a time.
April the 4th, please.
That'd be a call meeting, then. What did you just make? Is there any reason to get it done before?
Well, this, this is going through the county commission, and there's some timing issues involved there.
But is, does a collector status even have a bearing on it?
Not, not critically, no. You could wait till the regular meeting if you'd like.
I'm just saying, rather than-
I'm open for either. I just would like to go ahead and be proactive, is what I'm looking for.
Understand.
But what, what you might have is both the public hearing for the classification of the road and the public hearing for a rezoning on that day.
At our meeting or the, or the call meeting?
Well, not, not the call meeting, but at the regular meeting.
Okay. Then let me rescind my motion and get both items on the agenda for the April 26th.
Well, we haven't got an application yet. It's just that's a possibility. I just want you to, to know that you might be doing both actions at the same night if you, if you do it on the 25th. It can be accomplished.
Okay.
25th?
6th. 26th, right, John?
Right.
25th. Let me make, get my calendar again.
But couldn't go to the March meeting?
25th. Uh, no, we got to have, uh, we got to have 30, 30 days' notice. They couldn't put it on the March meeting. Don't have time to do that.
That's, I don't think. I am personally open for this, a call meeting, as I said earlier. If every, if everybody else is in favor of that. If not, then the 20, the 25th will be sufficient.
Well, go ahead and make the motion for the, for the call meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Let's get a second on that, and then we'll discuss and decide whether it's the 4th or the 25th. All right, we have a motion to recommend the change of status of West Millers Cove to collector status with a public hearing on April?
4th.
4th.
5:30, I presume.
Do I have a second? All right, Commissioner French?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess my question is, the status of the roads, I guess. We have, I assume that the road plan has parameters for why they establish our, major arterial roads as opposed to minor local traffic or collector status road. And I guess I'm concerned that, can you all of a sudden just, if, if this thing was classified as a minor, a minor-
It's a local road right now.
Local road, and, and they're wanting to redefine it as collector status. Is, is there no improvement to that road that we're going to have to make to?
No.
In other words, why, I guess my question is, why wasn't it defined as collector status before? If there are parameters determining what the roads are classified as, I, I don't, I guess I'm-
I'll try to answer that.
Do I make myself clear, am I?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll try to answer.
But all of a sudden, you're, you're picking something and saying, well, we classified this as this now because of what's there, but all of a sudden, we're, we're not doing anything to it, and we're reclassifying it without making any, any improvements to it. I guess that's my question.
It's independent of any improvements that you'll be doing to a road. What you do is classify a road based on function. A, a local road provides access to property. It's, it's the lowest level of a function. It provides access to individual pieces of property. A collector status road provides access between major activity units. In other words, it, it will collect traffic up and bring it to a higher-level road. 321 is an arterial, so you're collecting your traffic and going to an arterial. The, the, uh, major activity here would be a resort type of activity. You're recognizing that as a, as a major activity. It's not just providing access to, like residences, it's providing access to a, a resort. And that's to recognize that linkage between that resort and that, along that road to the major road.
Totally. It has nothing to do with the amount of traffic that's going to be traveled on that road.
Well, I did talk to Bill Dunlap. He has no objections to this. He does recognize that there is substantial traffic along there, and there's justification for it. We actually, when we did our major road plan, looked at East and West Millers Cove because of the development that's going along both of them. East Millers Cove was of such a, it had some problems with width and so forth, and we left it off. West Millers Cove is from 17 to 20 feet wide, and we were just about to put it on the map, but we figured that we would panel both of those sides of Millers Cove Road the same. This just recognizes the introduction of a new zone. And it makes, it makes it consistent within the planning context.
Go ahead.
I, I, what is, what is this property zone now?
Residential.
It's zoned residential now?
Well, it's zoned R1. It's zoned R1. It's used commercially for the most part, and I presume it's taxed commercially for the most part. It has several, if you're talking about Blackberry?
Well, yeah, the property in question here, what we're talking about.
Well, this, this applies to all the properties along Millers Cove, but, but this was, the, it was instigated, I guess, or, or at least the impetus came from Blackberry. We're recognizing that that is a resort type of, an activity, and they're having difficulty in adjusting their operations under a non-conforming status, and we were trying to give it a conforming status with a zone and allow them to a little bit more flexibility in, in the operations. Now, a lot of that area in there is actually used agriculturally, so I don't presume that it's being taxed commercially totally. I don't know for a fact, but that, that would be my assumption, because there's a lot of agricultural use, a lot of open space, there's a lot of conservancy around that area that's not taxed as a commercial. So I can't tell you this is all going to be commercial, but it would be at least a resort zone.
From what I understand, the new, this new zone is going to allow a combination of everything, residential, agricultural, commercial, combined in one zone.
Basically what's there now, and, yes. It, it, it's a mixed use, but I, like I say in my analysis of the planning documents we have, we do recognize mixed uses as a, as a valid approach within a planned unit context.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor to set a public hearing to change West Millers Cove from just a local road to collector status. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. All right, that motion carries, so John, you'll-
I'll set the public hearing.
Set the public hearing, and that will be a special call meeting. All right, discussion on the, proposed planned rural resort district. As John said, the county commission has already set public hearing on the text as it is written. I guess, John, we need to send our recommendation or approval or whatever of-
Yes.
-of this district. If we change the wording, the public hearing has to be changed.
It would depend on how major, if it's real minor clerical type of, of changes, I think it could go through, but if you do substantial changes in your recommendation, it might take it. Keep in mind, you only recommend, the county commission has before them a proposal, and they're just waiting on your recommendation. You could actually recommend against it, and they could vote to approve it. Because all they need is your recommendation.
It's in their, yes. I understand it is within their purview. I guess the only questions I would ask, John, is the, as the proposal was written, it is a minimum of 40 acres.
Yes.
How, how did we arrive at 40 acres? And-
To be a resort, it's, it can't be just a minimal piece of land. You know, if you're going to talk about a planned resort situation with four major components, residential, commercial, agricultural, and open space, if you're going to make that at all substantial, you need a substantial piece of land. That, that's basically, and 40 acres is, is just something that, uh, didn't pull it out of the air, but it was, it's more than the five acres for a planned unit development because you do have those four required elements to put in there. If you just counted, you know, 10 acres to each one of those, you've got, you've got 40 acres.
So it could be subject to debate?
Could be subject to debate, yes.
Uh, the, the second question is, right now, as it is written, the language implies that it, with a specific area in mind, but there's also the implication of, of east of Wallen Gap. And I guess I'm being at that, in that district, in that area, is there any reason this could not be opened up to other areas?
It could be. Like I say, the initial designation is for Millers Cove Road, West Millers Cove Road. If you found other situations where this could apply and be of benefit to the county, then yes, you could do the same thing.
Okay. I, I guess that is really the, and I'm not suggesting that we change the wording in here, but I guess I would like to leave the door open. And the way it's written, I believe the door is open for us to, to revisit.
Yes.
The-
The mechanism for doing that, if this were approved as is, the mechanism for doing that would be to bring it back and amend it to add another road segment or another area to, to open up.
All right, Commissioner Wright?
John, I've got some concerns from a couple of people up there that lives next to this effect property. And their main concern is, and the question asked is, will my property taxes go up? Will this increase the value of my property and make my taxes go up?
I wouldn't see it doing that. You're taxed at the use that you have. I like to say that I would think that Blackberry Farm is, if their residential portions are taxed at residential tax rate, the commercial portions are taxed at commercial tax rate. So if you're up in, in this area and you're in the R1 zone and you have a residence, it, I, I wouldn't see it affecting your taxes.
So if it's R1, you'll stay R1 until it's changed?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, the county commission is looking for a comment, recommendation, or action from our, from this body. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? And we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. John, staff reports.
Well, I just have one thing to discuss with you. I wasn't at the last meeting and I did listen to the tape, but I didn't get a clear indication on education. Do you want to have education sessions after a meeting?
I believe we said yes.
Did say yes, okay. Figure that the next time, the next meeting, if we don't have a real heavy agenda, I'll schedule an hour training after the next meeting.
Sounds good. We are adjourned.